Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our February the 9th, 2023 board meeting. Welcome everybody here today that's here in the courtroom and anybody in the virtual world also. Our first item on the agenda is the invocation and Pastor Corey Kiss. Would you be so kind, sir?
Absolutely. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to offer the prayer. If you would like to join me, would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Gracious and loving God, your word sums up the essence of our faith. Love you with all of our hearts, minds, souls, and strength, and to love our neighbor as we love ourselves. As this meeting now gets underway, I pray that she would be with the members of this board as they work towards the common good of our home, spread their wisdom and understanding. May the decisions be made in a way that will be most beneficial for all of us. Those of us who call the Lord and that our home may be nurtured as a land of pleasant living in the way that we as neighbors relate to each other, seeking peace and harmony, laboring to make this place even more beautiful, even more pleasant, even more welcoming. I pray for peace to reside in our midst, and I pray that she would help us to be good stewards of all that we receive from you. In a few moments, we will pledge as one nation under God, help us to remember our servicemen and women. We pray for those who put their lives on the line for this nation, so that freedom and peace may be ensured. Indeed, without their service, our lives would be drastically different. And so with a grateful heart, help us to love you as you have shown your love to us in your son, Jesus Christ, in his life, death, and resurrection. In his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, next item is the pledge of allegiance. Will we all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, in the midst of political and justice for all.
All right, our next item would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? If we do, staff having to change?
Yes, sir.
All right, if we don't have any additions or deletions, can I have a motion to approve?
So move it, so move it.
Second. All right, I got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is the approval of the minutes. And we have January the 9th, 2023 call meeting, January the 11th, 2023 call meeting, January the 12th, 2023 regular meeting, January the 17th, 2023 call meeting, and January the 26th, 2023 call meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? And do you want to make a motion to approve them all together or separately?
I move that we approve them all together.
Second. All right, I got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, our next item is our presentations. And we have a presentation from Calio Hometown Association on park update. Come on up, ladies. This is Deets, Ms. Newsom. Glad to see y'all today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Lisa Deets, president of the Calio Hometown Community Association. I am here to provide you with an update on the development of our park for our county residents. The last time CHCA was here before the board was when Bobby Burgess and the Burgess family officially donated over two acres of land to CHCA to develop a county park. Since then, a number of activities have been undertaken to start the process of the park development. First, CHCA established a special park fund at the bank with donations from individuals, businesses, fundraiser, and a private family trust. We continue to receive donations on a regular basis. Second, CHCA is very excited about an additional land donation. Premise Bank has donated property behind their bank adjacent to the parkland for parking. The final legal documents are being prepared for the transfer of the land to CHCA. Third, CHCA has named the park. CHCA has always viewed the park as a need for the entire county. As you know, Northumberland has extensive outdoor recreational opportunities with marinas, boat ramps, charter fishing, kayaking, boat trails, three preserves, a beach, and much more. It does not, however, have a park, and that is a need for all its residents and visitors. CHCA did not want this to be viewed as a park just for Calio, so the board decided not to include Calio in the name of the park. Rather, its name is Hometown Community Park to reflect the hometown nature of the entire county and to design it to include all ages and all levels of abilities for its residents and visitors. Next, CHCA contracted with Hill Studios to design the park based on the priorities and input of county community members. As you may recall, Hill Studios was a firm contracted by the county to do the revitalization plan for Calio, which originally included a park. CHCA worked with Hill Studios to develop, refine, and make modifications as needed to the design. And the final full-color design arrived yesterday. We are excited to share this with you tonight. Here is a large version of the plan for the park. And each of you have been provided with an eight-by-11 version. The park will include an accessible playground for children, a walking trail, all around the perimeter is a walking trail, picnic areas, there's picnic areas here and here, a game area, which is along in here, a covered pavilion, which is here, an amphitheater for concerts and outdoor entertainment, and a gathering place for farmers' markets and other events. If you notice, the amphitheater will be made out of a repurposed silo top. And the entrance building with the restrooms will resemble a barn to reflect the agricultural heritage of our county. There will also be nautical items throughout the park to reflect our waterman's heritage also. To fund this effort, CHCA is in the process of developing a comprehensive fund development strategy to secure grants, corporate donations, support from state and local government, foundations, businesses, and private individuals, and to conduct a variety of fundraising efforts. The park is an exciting undertaking for CHCA, and we are committed to making it a reality. If you have any further questions, suggestions, or recommendations, please feel free to contact me or any one of our board members. Thank you for all your time and attention this evening. We will continue to keep you updated on our progress.
Who do you make the check out to if you want to give a donation?
CHCA Park Fund.
Okay, where do you mail it?
P.O. Mark 17.
Seventeen.
Calio, Virginia.
Okay, well, you have a place for people to ride their bicycles around there.
We've got some walking trails, but we don't have anything specified specifically for bike trails.
Not that big.
We have some bike trails in the county.
I just wondered if people had the bike up there, but not necessarily this time?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Tadlock, does the T-21 or something similar to it still exist, like what Kilmonic did with their park and what Warsaw did with theirs?
That's something that we would have to check into. You're talking through the VDOT grant, the T-21 grant.
David could probably tell us more, maybe. But I mean, that's something, obviously, other localities have used that.
Yes, they have.
And I think we need to explore it as much for them additionally and obviously get our share, so to speak.
Sure. It's something we need to check into.
Thank you.
And the one thing I would suggest is any newspaper who might want a digital copy of your map for their newspaper article. Try to help spread the word.
Yep.
And a color picture in a digital form helps greatly. But very good what you have done, proposed. And if we can propose a grant like that, obviously, other localities adjoining counties have done it. We need to do the appropriate thing to do the same thing for y'all.
We want to check that, yes.
What's your total acreage now with the second piece of land done?
It'll be close to three acres, probably. We've got a little over two acres from the Burgess family, and I think it's about a third of an acre coming from the bank.
This is that grassy area that's right behind the bank that is adjacent to our land.
One other question. If someone like to call you, suggest some things, or get some information, what's your telephone number?
They call me at Cali Supply, 04-529-6265.
Or send an email.
We talked about grants, what other counties and towns have done, but also other counties and towns have themselves contributed to projects like this, and we need to do it as well.
Well, those grants usually require a certain percentage of locality funding, which can be in-kind, staff-kind, and stuff like that, but yes.
This is a 501(c)(3), right?
I don't mean as much anymore.
Have you located?
Our treasurer's here.
That's 501(c)(3).
Located at the silo top? Yes?
Not yet.
We're hoping we can find a used one.
We've got some peelers out that are.
Call me tomorrow. I think I'll know where two is at.
Good. Okay.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Any other questions?
Ladies, y'all have done a lot of work on this, and it's going to be a wonderful project when you get it completed. We look forward to seeing it.
Well, it's been a team effort.
Oh, I know. You've got a lot of people back there that have been working too.
They're the face, but there's a lot of committee behind it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Thank everybody for the work you've been putting into it. Thank you.
Thank the bank for giving land too.
All right, next item is the update from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal, good to see you, sir.
Hey, good to be here. Good to be seen, right? Thanks for having me. I'll just run through this report. We completed some brush cutting in the Remo area. We repaired low shoulder on 360 Avalon to Horsehead. We cleaned ditches on various routes. We cleaned curb and gutter on Courthouse Road, patched potholes countywide. Our Jack and Board pipe replacement on 360 is mostly complete. The water's flowing through the new pipe. They still need to abandon the old pipe. They had some trouble with their pumping equipment to pump the grout into the old pipe, so they'll come back in the next week or two and do that. Picked up trash on various routes, and we've been addressing work orders countywide. We still have the pipe on Route 200 to fix. It may be a few months before we get there. I learned this week contractors committed in other locations throughout the district. So we're in line. Everything's ready to go. We have all the permissions and permits. We just have to get him to advance his schedule. We'll continue to patch potholes. We have continuing to work on low shoulders on 360. They're planning to clean ditches in the Edwardsville area and clean a curb and gutter on 360 in Reedville, and continuing to pick up trash on Fruit Plain. Secondary six-year plan, we just have Addys Point Road on there. It's planned for the summer of '26. We will need to do a secondary six-year plan public hearing this spring. We skipped it last year, but we will need to do that. I don't know that you'll have enough money in the plan to add any routes, but we still need to have the hearing. Structure and bridge, the only real update I have. I expect a press release to come out tomorrow or Monday on the Bridge Scour projects. Route 604 will close on Monday, February 20th, at 7:00 a.m. And Route 605 will open Monday, February 20th, at 5:00 p.m. So they'll overlap. Both roads will be closed for a day while they move equipment from one site to the next. And then 605 is expected, I'm sorry, 604 is expected to reopen. I think I said those backwards. 605 is the one that's under construction now. And it will, it will open at 5:00 p.m. on the 20th. 604 is where we're moving to, and it'll close at 7:00 a.m. on the 20th. I do expect 604 to be closed until the end of May. Any questions on that? I didn't confuse everybody.
The one thing you do need to do is to put some detour signs on 604 Crosshills Road. Otherwise, you'll get all the way down to that bottom when you've got a mile plus to turn around and come back out. There's no signage on 604 Crosshills Roads now, but you will definitely need it then.
I'll check the detour plan.
You finished that?
Yeah, well, that was in reference to that. Go ahead, Jim.
There's a sign down at the turn off up by Mount Olive Baptist Church.
605-200 intersection.
605-200. Okay, also, I see you doing some trash pickup. And I made a call the day over there. I didn't get an answer because I'd like to get somebody over in my area, Walcomaker area. Lot of trash over in that area.
Did you call VDOT today?
Yes.
To the 800 number, or where did you call?
I called 338-1900, but I got the person that's in charge of, I called his office. I forget his name, but he didn't pick up. Okay, the next thing, you know, in the paper, it was last week, where one of the boards in Langston County talked about the Norris Bridge. What's the update? Or do you have an update?
I really don't have an update planned for tonight. We are working on some preliminary engineering, and that's supposed to be done in June. And then when that's done, we'll meet with, plan to meet with the Lancaster board then, and we can share that information with you all too. And we'll have more information on alignment and that sort of thing. Some, you know, high-level plans are being worked on now.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. All right.
Brand, do you have anything?
Yeah. While we're talking about the trash pickup, Lewis Sata Road needs a little bit of attention. Lively hope. You mentioned Fruit Plain, but also Valley Drive. And I would imagine your Fruit Plain, worst spots down in the bottom, and that's where you're going to find it, in Valley Drive. You're going to find tires, TVs, sofas, recliners, all kinds of good stuff down there. But it needs to be cleaned up. And I talked to Mr. Valangham this week. I think he was going to pass on to you work order 1638, 160038. I had some citizens from.
Is that Lewis Sata?
Yeah, they're saying they've lost communication. VDOT on this work order would like to have somebody give them a call.
I'll follow up on them.
So, okay. Tom?
Nope, mine's about already been addressed.
You got all yours? All right. I see you've started cutting some trees down on 200. I actually cut the trees on 200 where you're going to put that crossing in.
Yeah, we are expecting the listing on the bat. There's a northern long-eared bat, and we're anticipating it being listed as endangered. And one of those stipulations is we're limited on when we can cut trees so that when we cut those trees, we're limited to January 30th. And they extended that out to March after we cut that down. So we've cut them down so we don't have that issue when we get there to do the work. The trees will already be gone.
At least you got to start.
Yeah, trying to plan ahead a little bit.
So that's the side you're going to come down, like on 360 where they went with the excavators? That's the side you're going to go on?
Yeah, it'll be on the west side. The east side is just straight down.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, it's not much on that side.
No, you'd be doing a lot of excavating and removing to do that.
Right. I would say on the trash pickup, we typically pick up trash countywide when we mow. And the winter, it gets tough because we mowed in October, and then we don't mow again until April and May. So we kind of hit the hotspots. But I don't want to set the expectation that we're going to pick up the entire county, but we're doing what we can on that.
All right, no one has anything else? Thank you for your update.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right. Can everybody hear us tonight? Okay.
Who wants to?
Yeah, if you want to, yeah. Can you hear me now? All right, as an update, next is the update from Northumberland County Public Schools. Dr. Wargo?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. For school updates, if you look at the handout I placed at your tables, we'll start on page one. This week, we are celebrating National School Counseling Week. And you can see a photo of our school counselors. To the left, you have Tiffany Rombold, who serves at NMS. We have Beverly Fallon and Heather Westbrook, counselors at NES, and Director of School Counseling, Sherry Gross, and Renee Johnson at NHS. And we are very appreciative of all of our school counselors' efforts. Also on page one tomorrow, the elementary school is hosting an NES PFO bingo night. So if you would like to join us, it looks like first grade will sing seasons of the year at 5:45 with bingo starting at 6:00. Tomorrow evening, we also have senior night at the high school. If you move on to page two, yesterday and today, our junior beta is competing in their state competition, and that's in Hampton, Virginia. Next week's message, we will highlight all of our winners. And we do have some winners already. Toward page two and three, you'll see a recognition of our winter cheer team as well as our winter dance teams who have been performing. And then the CPMT asked us to include a survey that they would like families to give them input on. And that survey is open until May 31st. There is a QR code if you'd like to share that. You can either take it with the QR code, or you can print it out. And Mrs. Jackie Clayton said she'd accept that. On page four, you can see that February is also School Board Appreciation Month. You can see a picture of the school board and Mr. Tadlock at the groundbreaking ceremony that we hosted in December. That's for the academic and athletic new construction project. That's coming along nicely. We did a walk-through last week with Kanamara Corporation, and they are indicating that they may be, they may be complete with the project in June of 2023. So they've been doing wonderful work. If you haven't been by, please stop by. It's matching very nicely with the beautiful campuses that we have, the green metal roofing they were working on today. Sides are up. They match completely with the building, and brickwork also matches. So we appreciate that. At the bottom of page four, you can see that the school board honored Legislative's Day down in Richmond. They did meet with Delegate Ranson and other key officials. Over on page five, you'll see that March 5th is an important day. It would be great if we could share this with families, students, and community. The Northern Neck Technical Center is hosting an open house on March 5th. And this is a place where students and families can explore the programs that are offered, meet their teachers, take a tour, and find out more about that tech center program that's so very important to our area. And, yes, sir?
Your flyer says the 15th.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's an error on my part. So thank you for that, Mr. Brand. I'll make sure to change that because I think we have published this. So I'll make a change on that. You can see upcoming calendar days listed. There is a parent conference night on February 23rd, different things like that. Report cards on March 31st. We did begin the new semester, obviously. The high school operates on a four-by-four block schedule. And I'm looking here to see if I, everything else, you know, it's our typical reminders. We are, you know, I just want to emphasize that we are very focused on our campus, student, and staff safety. As you know, we have metal detection in every single school. We're very proud of that. We also are very thankful that we have a school resource officer in every school. So thank you for your support on that. Next, I have Tara Booth, who is going to give a brief finance update.
Good evening. We have on Monday, the 13th, is coming Monday, at 3:00, we have our budget work session that will be held in the library of Northumberland High School. And then at 6:00, we will have our regular school board meeting. And we're looking forward to our joint meeting with you on Tuesday, February 20th, Wednesday, February 22nd.
So at 3:00?
Yes, the work session is at 3:00 on Monday.
And part of that normal 6:00 meeting, there will be a public hearing on the school budget.
I believe I asked you this before, but I'm asking, how many kids do we have at the technical center? Do you know?
I do. I remember that question, Mr. Long. We just went over those numbers at our latest meeting, and it looked to me like we have 49 students. And when you compare with the regional participants, that's a high number, and we're very proud of that. We want to make sure as many students as possible can access those programs. They're very important.
Do they have the STEM program up there?
They do. It's a governor's STEM academy at the tech center.
Do we have any kids in that?
We do, yes.
Okay. How many, you know?
I did not bring that information, though I could break, I could break that down by program and bring it.
You can let Mr. Tadlock know.
Okay.
Okay, and the other thing, I'd like for you to include the athletic schedule, you know?
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Because I know, I know it's quite a few different activities going on there.
That's right. Tomorrow, we have JV Boys Home at 5:30 versus the Eagles, Westmoreland. And then senior night, I believe, is at 6:45. Stop by. You can see us. Stop by, you can see us, and then the game will start around seven o'clock for Bar City, so we're playing Westmoreland tomorrow evening.
Westmore...
And I will try to, Tara, help me remember to put the athletic schedule in here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Brand, you have... Tom?
What impact, if any, is the Virginia Department of Education's screw-up on the sales tax mean to Northumberland County?
So, from the Calc tool that they put out, it looks like it'll be about seventy-five thousand dollars for this year. Um, they did, however, say that they had a meeting today, and that after that meeting, they would let us know. A memo had come out saying that there was a mistake in that, and that they were going to find a way to cover the funds, but we don't know if that's the case. So, hopefully by next week, we will have an answer to that.
Small seventy-five for us in comparison, but two-hundred million statewide, I hope they got two-hundred million dollars laying around.
That's a good point.
When we met with Delegate Ranson and Senator McDougal, they pledged that they would try to fix that.
Yeah, but we're three-quarters into this year, basically, and, I mean, was it Chesterfield? Had ten million dollars, they're looking at a shortfall, and RICO, six million, it's, you know, to paraphrase Edward Derrickson, a billion here, billion there, a thousand here is real money. I mean, we're a small system in comparison, but that's, we can't, I mean, the General Assembly and the State Department of Education dropped the ball big time on this one.
Yes.
Mr. Jett, you have anything?
Nope.
I don't have a thing. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having us.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. All right, now, next item on the agenda is a county administrator's report. Mr. Tadlock, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Uh, for the month of January, we had three new structures totaling, uh, five-point-three million dollars for the total construction cost for the month, it was five-point-three million. Um, and that, that, of course, is the total construction cost for the year. Uh, starting the year off, we're approximately one-point-one million above this time last year. Next item I have is a reappointment for Michael Vaughn for the border zoning appeals, and he is willing to serve again.
All right, motion to approve? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Huh? What'd you say? All right. You have a discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-seven dollars fifty cent for account, uh, ten-dash-two-seven-three to account thirty-one-oh-two-one-thousand-six, and that's for the ball games.
All right, have a motion? All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is another supplemental appropriation in the amount of seven-thousand-six-hundred-fifty dollars to line item thirty-one-oh-two-fifty-four-fourteen for half of the total payment, um, and to transfer the remaining balance of seven-thousand-six-hundred-fifty dollars from the sheriff's donation account to account thirty-one-oh-two-fifty-four-fourteen, and that is for the AEDs, uh, in the grant that the sheriff's office headed to.
Okay. All right, we have a motion?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Another supplemental appropriation in the amount of three-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-nine dollars forty-one cent to twelve-oh-nine-eight-thousand-six for the Department of Forestry Grant, uh, which was requested by the commissioner of revenue.
All right, I have a motion?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Next item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one-hundred-thirty-seven-thousand-two dollars and sixteen cent to line item forty-three-oh-two-thirty-one-hundred for the stormwater repair.
All right. Got a motion?
Would it approve?
All right, got a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
Is this believed to resolve the issue?
We, we hope so. Um, we, uh, everything was, um...
Thank you for asking that.
...done to the engineer standards, and, uh, we had staff put in to take a look at it as well, so...
As long as it solves the problem.
Yeah, we do.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Next item I have is a resolution approving the county's participation in the proposed settlement of the opioid-related claims, and directing the county attorney and/or county's, uh, outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Uh, no, I believe that will suffice, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy to answer any questions you may have, but, uh, this is at the request of outside litigation counsel that's been representing the county, along with all the other counties and, uh, cities in, uh, in the Commonwealth, and working with the state attorney general's office on the, uh, on the opioid litigation settlements that are nationwide. So, this is just to, uh, to agree to, uh, a certain settlement, which will allow funds to flow not only to the county, but to the state opioid abatement authority, uh, for later distribution to, um, through their programs. Recommend approval.
All right, any board members have any questions? Questions for Mr. Gregory? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve this resolution. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, next item I have is, last month, we presented to the board information on the, on how DWR defines a loaded firearm, and how that impacted several of the hunt clubs, and, uh, previously how they thought, or how the county thought that a loaded firearm was defined. Um, it was also noted that the Virginia Code section referenced in our county code had been repealed and is now defined under fifteen-point-two-dash-nine-fifteen-point-two. Board did also ask for, uh, further clarification from counsel and to review whether the county could define a loaded firearm, and after further review from, uh, Mr. Gregory, uh, he is suggesting not, that the board not define that as it is, um, defined by DWR, and this is also due to the fact that under twenty-nine-point-one-dash-five-oh-four, uh, which states that courts shall take judicial notice of the laws and regulations published by DWR. So, I guess, really, we have two options. One would be to, um, amend our current ordinance, uh, with the corrected code section, um, to keep that in place, or, uh, if there's any concern, I guess, with some of the hunters, I know that was, had been raised earlier, um, I guess we would need to repeal that, that one section, that seventy-two-point-four.
I think there's one, one other.
Okay.
One, one third option I, that you could consider, and that is just to leave it alone, leave it as is. I believe the ordinance would still be enforceable, uh, even though it has a reference to a now-repealed state code section, because under, when, when the General Assembly repealed the reference code section, they adopted or approved other legislation, basically just moved the authority into the local government title in the state code, so the county still has the authority to prohibit that activity under existing state law. So, you could leave the ordinance as is, uh, you could amend the ordinance to, uh, reference the newly, uh, the new, newer, uh, state code sections that are applicable to this, and give the county the authority to prohibit this conduct, or you could repeal the ordinances entirely.
So, if you leave it as it is, it's still going to go the way that DWR, or whatever the, uh, game boards interpret it?
Right, I, I don't, DWR had, well, let's just back up. The, the term loaded firearm is not defined in the state code.
But you said in your letter, the state does give the DWR...
Right.
...authority to define it.
Well, I don't know if they give DWR authority to define it, but DWR has defined it, and their defin, definition is, uh, loaded firearm is defined as a firearm in which ammunition is chambered or loaded in a magazine or clip, and is engaged or partially engaged in a firearm. And what Mr. Mr. Tadlock mentioned was that there's a, another code section, Virginia Code Section twenty-nine-point-one-five-zero-four, which says that all laws relating to hunting, fishing, and trapping, together with the regulations of the board of both general and local application, shall be published annually by the department, meaning the Department of Wildlife Regulation, uh, uh, Wildlife Regulation, in a handbook or pamphlet. The courts of the Commonwealth shall take judicial notice of all laws and regulations contained in such publication. So, and that definition is published in that publication. So, you know, I would just defer to DWR and their definition and how they interpret that, um, and I think that the, the Commonwealth's attorney in the enforcement, uh, of the, of the ordinance would, you know, it's up to the, the Commonwealth's attorney whether they want to prosecute a case like that or not, or, or up to the CPO, um, but that's, that's up to them.
But DWR is a state agency. This, whether it's under the repealed section or the fifteen-point-two code section, they are local, they are our ordinance. Why can we not define a loaded firearm as we see fit? And they can then take judicial notice of the actual ordinance, which is presented to them.
That may be possible, and my, my caution would be that you could try that. Uh, my caution would be that a state agency, uh, their, their interpretation or their definition would probably trump a local ordinance, and I'm not so sure a local government has the statutory authority to define what a loaded firearm is and derogation of...
But they don't have an ordinance, they don't have a statute themselves that define. We certainly could override their definition. Right now, the Code of Virginia is silent as far as the definition of a loaded firearm under twenty-nine-point-one or fifteen-point-two.
That's correct.
This, this would be our ordinance under the old one or the new code section.
You, you could try to define loaded firearm. I think it might run into a Dillon Rule conflict, um, as to whether a local government has the authority to do that or not. Uh, I'm not sure.
Well, this would also give strong guidance and recommendation to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office of what our procedure is.
Well, you could also just repeal the ordinances altogether.
But then, if, if you, if the ordinance is, was there for some reason before, then if you don't have that...
So, if we repeal the ordinance, it would be nothing in the county's ordinance against loaded guns in the county?
It would be, the, the ordinance prohibits, um, well, it's just...
Right, rifles and shotguns only.
It shall, yeah, they state that it shall be unlawful for any person to transport, possess, or carry a loaded shotgun or rifle in any vehicle on any public street, road, or highway within Northumberland County. And then there's an exception for law enforcement, um, uh, or for somebody who is carrying it who reasonably believes that a loaded rifle or shotgun is necessary for his or her personal safety in the course of his or her employment or business. Uh, and then the, the other, uh, ordinance, um, states that it's, it shall be unlawful for any person to carry or have in his or her possession while on any part of the public highway within Northumberland County, a loaded firearm when such person is not authorized to hunt on private property on both sides of the highway along which he or she is standing or walking.
So, if we're repealing it, we have, uh, so we repeal it, what would be the law in Northumberland, you'd be able to have a loaded firearm on the public highway, right?
Loaded shotgun or rifle.
That conduct would...
Shotgun or rifle, yeah.
That conduct would...
It's repaired in the past over the years, and some of the boys that hunt over in the area of Tri-County area, Richmond County and Langston both allowed, as far as I know. They can, is that right, Greg? The one, Richmond County allows loaded firearms, so, yeah, but Woods Home, that Tri-County area, where the three counties come together, one side of the road is one side of the road is one, the other side of the road is another side of the road for them. And that's, I'd like to see it be repealed where they all come together and to do that. So, that, that's the way to do it, is repeal it and take it in completely, right? To do what I just said.
Uh, yeah, I suppose you could do that, uh, if you, if you want to, um, allow the carrying of firearms in, there's two different things going on here, carry the firearm, to carry or transport the firearms within a vehicle.
Right.
And then there's the sort of walking on the public highway with a loaded firearm.
Is that two different ones?
That's two different ordinances.
And the walking on a highway, I don't... Uh, we have the one in that hunting at the road right away, right? Isn't that in ours, Northumberland?
Yeah.
So, legally, that would be conflicting with that, really?
Um, not really, you could, you could have a... What's the definition of hunting? It'd be, it would fall within the definition.
Yeah.
But if you, if your gun was totally unloaded, nothing in the chamber or the magazine, that would be legal if that other one was removed.
I see, you can carry it in, on the roads in a truck, but you can't walk down the road with it.
Right now, you can't do either. Loaded.
Loaded, yeah, that's what I'm calling it.
Yeah.
That's kind of conflicting, uh...
Well, if, if these, if these people have a felony, they can't do it, can't do it anywhere.
But no matter the difference, what kind of gun it is, it goes bang, it's illegal.
Right.
It's a felony.
Right.
Shotgun, rifle, pistol, muzzleloader, if it goes bang. That, that, that one's not, is not applicable, because it got a whole bunch of other problems besides that.
It's, it's not a felony, by the way, it's, it's just punishable by a fine.
No, he was saying, for a felon to be doing that, he would have his own issues with the gun.
Yes, sir.
So, what would be your suggestion, Mr. Gregory?
Well, it's a policy matter for the board to decide. The question is just whether you want to prohibit that conduct or not. Uh, if you want to continue to prohibit that conduct, you can either leave the ordinance as it is, uh, which I, and I believe it's still enforceable, um, and you defer to, to DWR's interpretation, or, or not, you know? The, the CPOs are, are state officials, they're not local officials, I, and it's up to, if the Commonwealth's attorney, if it comes under their purview, it's whether, it's up to them whether they want to prosecute or not. Or you could amend the ordinance to reference the new, the newer code sections, which authorize the county to prohibit this conduct, or you could repeal the ordinances entirely, which would then allow the conduct. You could try to define firearms, uh, a loaded firearm, in a different way than DWR has. I wouldn't recommend that, but if you, if you want us to do that, we can try. It might be more difficult.
All right. What does the board want to do?
I guess I'm confused if a county can, can determine whether or not you can have a loaded rifle or shotgun in your vehicle, but yet it's confusing on defining what's a loaded firearm. Anyhow, um, I'd like to look into what Ronnie is talking about. I'd like to get some more information on that.
When's the latest weekend act, from May the first? The April meeting?
It would be the April meeting.
My concern is not having any ordinance at all, regardless of the code section, is a loaded, if you, somebody has a chamber in the, a round in the chamber, that is what I'm concerned about. I'm less concerned about in the magazine. Somebody gets excited, and we're, we're not trying to pick on a specific hunter, but deer hunters can get a little excited, and if the safety goes off, and they grab the gun, and as a partner, they might shoot their partner. their partner. That has happened. That's what I'm concerned about. Uh, people can do with a rifle, maybe a pistol or two, but that's what I'm concerned about. I really like for the county to be able to find what they determine a loaded firearm. And that's, I like to put the ordinance, basically that is, but have the definition, which was the way we always understood it to be. A loaded firearm was in the chamber. Because you've got to do more mechanisms to load, to actually fire it if you only got it in the magazine. Either got to drop a shell in the chamber, and if it's an open bolt, you got to close that, but it's a lot, it's safer, I think, to have nothing in the chamber.
Mm-hmm.
To me, it's loaded when it can go bang. If it's nothing in the chamber, it's not going bang short of a major malfunction.
And we have what till, the April meeting to make a decision, or do we need to make a decision by the March meeting?
Well, the sooner the better, because what you would have to do, we have to get that information to DWR, and they publish that. They need it in time to be able to get it in their, uh, their guidebook.
Well, their code section says May the first. We can hold them to that.
Uh, we do have another meeting here on the twenty-second, and we could, we could sit and think about it a little bit, and then talk about it again on the twenty-second. That is an option, but.
Yeah.
But that's up to the rest of the board.
We can go to March. I mean, we have, if, if anything is going to be repealed or added or amended, to get it into the game department, it has, Department of Wildlife Resources, I'm going to call them a game one as long as I'm alive. It has to be adopted by their April meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that, it does require a public hearing regardless, we can do anything, either repeal or replace or amend it.
Yep.
And maybe might, somebody might want to consult with our Commonwealth attorney to see what she feels about in terms of things, too.
That's another option, right there, to find, find out what her opinion is.
And what has been her opinion in prosecution.
That would be helpful to know.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Because they have prosecutorial discretion, as we all know very well.
Yep.
All right, y'all want to wait a little while, and then we'll check with Commonwealth attorney?
Yep. Have luck.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gregor.
You're welcome.
Next item I have is, you have in your packet, uh, two estimates, um, one from B.C. Paving and one from C.W. Davis Contractors. And this is to pave that section in front of the old courthouse. As you're looking at the courthouse to the right, that gravel area next, from the dropbox to the road, along the, um, that fenced area. What we're seeing is a lot of times when we have, of course, snow removal, um, Mr. Albright, when he pushes the snow, will have a lot of the, the rock pushed up. So that was one area that we were looking at trying to, uh, have paved.
All right, any discussion from the board?
Any reason not to go with low bid?
Yep.
Low bid's got three inches of asphalt, where the high bid's got two inches.
I know, I know the high bid person does a good job of that.
Yeah, I do, too. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I, I'd say we go to a low bid.
That's your motion, Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second?
What reason would we have for not going with low bid? Or is this a bid or an estimate?
These are estimates.
Oh.
We did not put this out for bid.
All right. But if you follow the analogy of bidding, it's, we still should have a good reason other than preference.
Yeah.
Well, the motion's on the floor.
Yep, got a motion, do I have a second?
We don't need a second.
I don't have a reason to say no.
All right, so you're going to second?
I'll second it, though, provided there's no, the board of contractors has no regulatory actions. I have seen that in other contractors with asphalt.
I understand your point there. All right, we got a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
But the last item I have, um, deals with this building. We need to start looking at replacement of a portion of the, of this building's roof. And we have received one estimate so far. However, when we've been talking to the contractors, um, they've noted that there's only about five to six years left on the life of the, the shingles. So we wanted to check with the board to see whether or not you want to proceed with a bid for the replacement of the, the roof, uh, whether it be shingles or metal, um, or if you want to go through an RFP process for the engineer, similar to what we did for, um, the EBB roof. There's, there's really nothing, um, structurally that we would be changing. The only thing that the, at this point, the engineer would be able to help us with would be the bidding process and making sure that the contractor, uh, did what, what was in the bid specs.
Well, he's still under, we're still with EBB with that contractor, or engineer, right?
We did. Now, we did that through RFP, um, but that was very specific for the EBB building. We did not expand that out.
Well, I think if you're going to consider something besides shingles, I think it would be good to have some expertise to check and recommend, too.
And we, because shingles are metal.
Yeah.
And all of them grades are metal, all of them styles are metal, too.
Yeah.
And types, so. I think we need to weigh in, I think we need to weigh all our options.
Yeah.
All right, so how does the board want to proceed with this?
To have an engineer or somebody, we'd have to do, uh, RFP or bid.
Yeah. Or, uh, we can check to see what is possibly out on state contract that we could cooperative procure.
See if you can do that. We've got a meeting the twenty-second, we can.
We can check into that.
Check on state contracts? Yeah. All right.
Or any existing contracts that other localities have done that have that.
Yep.
Cooperative procurement.
And are not so specific like ours.
Right. Okay, we'll look into that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tadlock. All right, the next item would be the approval of the check register. Will everybody have a chance to review it?
Move to approve.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion, a second. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item is board comments. We'll start with Mr. Long.
Uh, yes. Mr. Tadlock, we have all the leaks straight for the, uh, for the board, the school board's okay?
On the, uh, EBB, in last month's packet, uh, the board had the draft bid documents from the engineer. It's just a matter of how the board would like to proceed, uh, whether you want to put that out for bid to see what, uh, estimates we receive, or how, how the board would like to proceed on that.
Okay. I think we need to move on that. Okay, the second thing, uh, now, we're in control of the, uh, old school board office, right? It's in our hands now?
We just finalized, received the final signatures, and we will be getting that recorded.
Okay. Okay, uh, we planning to schedule any meetings for our budget, work on our budget?
Uh, well, I guess the, the first thing we would have would be with the school division on the twenty-second. That would kind of kick off the, the budget process.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Bryant?
What's planned for the old courthouse this year as far as getting some things fixed on the inside, in the outside?
We, actually, Mr. Basie and I have been talking with, uh, Mr. Albright and, uh, trying to come up with a list of items that, that are needed. And, uh, once we get that list together, we can get that to the board and, um, get that information to you all.
All right, and I think we're getting ready to come up on a new budget and planning for that budget. We need, we got two buildings in the county and added to county has possession of them that just sat. Sheriff's Office, now the old school board office. I mean, we need to look at what it's going to cost to demo those buildings, and what are we going to do with the property? Start looking at these projects and, and taking care of these. As these old buildings sit around, they look bad. And how can we sit up here as a board and, and talk a bit of local business or another building in the county that looks bad if we have buildings of our own looking just as bad? We need to focus on cleaning our own, let's say. And we need to get that into budget and start taking care of these problems.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Tom?
What is our status right now regarding the radio system? Where are we on that?
Uh, we have submitted the letter requesting to, uh, become a member of the regional radio system. I have not received anything, uh, back from them. I'm not sure if Sheriff Beecham has heard anything. But I, I can check with him to see whether or not he has heard anything.
So until we hear from them, we're just kind of, I'm not sure we're treading water. All right. All right, a little while ago, I asked the county staff, and Mr. Thomas got it, a list of the county properties. What I'd recommend is sending that list of properties to the planning commission along with staff and determining which pieces of property which are totally needed for government, like this building, Court's building, the school. Eliminate all those, the ones we clearly use on a regular basis and have some justified need. And then, or the other ones, start to consider something surplus-wise, or use them for other. Years ago, the county got property right by the Hampton Hall Bridge. There was some prospect of making that into a, uh, park kayak canoe launch. Got the poor house tract down here, what, seventy-plus acres, uh, own property adjacent to Damar's Marsh. There's properties that either we need to use them some way, sell them so we can put back on the tax rolls, or give them to other agencies or entities that will do something with it. There's a long list of properties that are just there. And I think we need to, Planning Commission would be a good place to start, if there's other ones that they can recommend, but, like, following up on Mr. Brand, we got properties, but we're twiddling their thumbs with it. And it's either we use it or lose it, so to speak. So I'd fully encourage that to be done. And lastly, I want to, I believe in transparency and letting the public know. In that vein, to paraphrase the great American president, silent Calvin Coolidge, that you got to understand, I do not choose to run for board of supervisors in 2023. And that's all.
All right. Mr. Jett?
Let me, uh, down at Horsehead, I noticed myself, I said, it needs grinding bad. You can't hardly get through the gate of the truck, and he was still loaded in the parking lot. Has Leon said anything about it, or is he broke down or?
He, he does have a piece of equipment that is broken down, um, and he has ordered the piece, and it's been backordered.
Much of it, I mean, they were going around it, and the overall part of the whole dump site, man called about that, said it was trashiest place here that I've ever seen. He said it was worse than it used to be by far. And I noticed, I guess it's a tenant's fault, they got that yellow tape all over that recycling shed, da-da, that's sloppy looking, that's way, that's displayed. But somebody had unloaded the other day, I saw that stay with two, two sofas and a whole bunch of cushions and a chair, I was sitting over beside the building, with signs everywhere, no dumping also. But the tenant must have been, is sitting in his shed, asleep, for somebody to unload all that, to stay there. They finally cleaned it up, I don't know who cleaned it up, but it stayed there. But I think we put something a little bit better up on that recycling shed, instead of that tape all over it every kind of which way. I got some ideas what to do with it, but thought it wouldn't go over too good. But the grinding, I mean, you're going to shut it down if you don't get something done. It's, it's right up to the gate.
Yeah.
Man, couldn't he, he was having a trail on his pickup, and the whole pickup was outside the gate because his trailer was backed up against the pile.
Hey, he might be able to take his loader and push some of that stuff back a little bit and make it a little bit more open. Leon needs to do something with it.
All right, I'll, I'll follow up with him now.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing since Mr. Jett brought that up. The, the trash site in Lottsburg, the little strip of woods in between the, the, uh, dump site, trash site in V-Dot, that needs to be cleaned up again. It's, it's too much trash. It's blown over to the containers, over the fence, and it's, the whole wood line is covered in trash. That needs to be picked up again.
All right.
We need to stay on top of that site. They finally got it looking a little better than what it was, and I was down there the other day, and it's, it's awful.
Good. All right, Mr. Tadlock?
I got what was on that subject.
Yes, go ahead.
Has the contract been signed with him yet for renewal?
Yeah, I've got an update, uh, for the board later.
Could we add something in that, keep it clean around there? I mean, it wouldn't take them. If it didn't do it for ten feet a day, rake it, get the trash up, the needle with, they can make a big improvement around there with a very little bit of work. Something be added in the contract like that?
That's something that we're currently negotiating, so we can certainly take a look at it and see what we can get straight.
Seem if we had a contract, maybe we'd do something better, but I mean, it's, it's a shame, a shame that they can't keep it cleaner and have the one down ditchlet. Those people seem to have a little bit of respect for the job and cleaning.
You have something, Mr. Tom? Chuck?
Chuck, yeah, Chuck gets a drive. He gets a drive on every night, yeah.
Yeah.
But it does look a hundred percent better down there than.
Yeah.
This one up here.
Yeah. All right. One other thing I want to add, is the county properties, can you get us, email us all the, list of all those properties? We'll have that to look at.
I think they got, I think y'all might have gotten it, it's, it's a long list.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen it, but that, that doesn't mean anything.
And it's by tax map code.
Yeah.
Took some time to figure it out.
Yep. And I don't have anything else. Do you have anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
I don't, no, sorry.
All right. The next item on the list is we need to convene in closed meeting. And Mr. Tadlock, do you have the right verbiage for us?
Yes, sir. I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. And section, uh, two point two thirty-seven eleven eight twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds, including interviews, or bidders, or offers, and discussion of terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA section two point two thirty-seven twelve F.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second, third.
All right. Have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going into closed meeting, and we'll be going into the next courtroom. going into the next courtroom. We'll be back as soon as we can. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting back to order, and we will need a motion to come out of closed meeting. And Mr. Tadlock, I think you have some wording for us.
All right, you ready?
Yeah.
Need a motion that the North Hillman Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right. All right, we'll need a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Mr. Jett?
Aye.
Mr. Annie, aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back now. All right, our first item on our agenda here right now is public comments. I have a public signup sheet here. The first person on the list tonight is Maurice Johnson.
My name's Maurice Johnson. I live in Reedville. Last month, I spoke to you on the horrendous activities that are happening at the Northern Neck Regional Jail. This month, there was a board meeting at the Northern Neck Reading Regional Jail. That board meeting was nothing if not theatrical, and certainly not a good reflection of the people that made it happen. The demonstration included an initial adjournment to a work session that lasted approximately an hour and a half while people waited in a small room. It's a tactic that we've seen all too often. You see it in Maricopa County a lot. That was followed by the "nothing to see here" speech given by the chairperson, and one of the most extreme displays of human nervousness we've ever seen. I haven't seen anything like that since I caught an ex-wife cheat mommy. We didn't leave during the work session, but we believe that that was the intense of the duration of the work session. We were undeterred by the theatrics and the hyperbole, though we were definitely insulted. We, the people of the Northern Neck, continue to build our case along the national, along with national outlets and other organizations. A key component when investigating activity from bad actors is to establish means, motive, and opportunity. When a fox goes into a henhouse, he has means, motive, and opportunity. The same is the case with the Northern Neck Regional Jail. We have a person who has expressed disdain for detainees and control over both means and opportunity. We have the trifecta. To date, we have seen zero exculpatory evidence beyond hearsay and denial. All while incriminating evidence is continuing to mount, and there is more coming, much more. As Americans lose trust in all levels of government, federal, state, and local, it all deteriorates for many different reasons. We, the people, have become wide awake, wide awake and educated on issues and informed on processes and players. We understand the targeted use of disinformation, misinformation, and malinformation used as a weapon against the people. We have grown skills that we didn't want to have to grow, and we're highly motivated. The problems that NNRJ are an attack on our Constitution. If the Constitution cannot stand for detainees who are still legally entitled to all of the rights in the Constitution, then it doesn't stand anywhere. When the response to reported inappropriate activity is to throw up a smokescreen and denial, Houston, we have a problem. Marbury versus Madison makes it clear that any law, policy, or rule which is repugnant to the Constitution is null and void. And while Rule 17B is the shield currently used in civil matters, we're not talking about civil matters. We're talking about criminal matters. Marbury versus Madison does shine a light on the path forward that needs to happen. Will the leadership of the counties involved with the Northern Neck Regional Jail take advantage of that light? History will tell. And I'll leave you with a little comment here. Let not anyone pacify his conscience by the delusion that he can do no harm if he takes no part and forms no opinion. Bad men need nothing more to compass their ends than that good men should look on and do nothing and form no opinion. He is not a good man who, without protest, allows wrong to be committed in his name and with the means which he helps supply, because he will not trouble himself or his brain to the problem. We're only beginning, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, next person to speak is Cheryl Johnson.
Cheryl Johnson, I won't take up much of your time. I know you only want to get home to your families, something that J-6 prisoners cannot do. These inmates, detainees, are human beings, and they are treated so unfairly. They don't, and they didn't do anything wrong. They simply want what we want, freedom. They have been detained for over two years and haven't gotten a hearing yet. I'm not a very good speaker, but at least I have a voice. The J-6 prisoners do not have a voice. We need to expose the truth of what is going on at the Northern Neck Regional Jail. We are fighting for their freedom, and we want the truth. Put yourself in their shoes. If you were detained in a corrupt world, in a corrupt jail, for over two years, wouldn't you want somebody to help you? We will not forget them. We all know right from wrong. What is happening at the Northern Neck Regional Jail is wrong on so many levels. We saw from the presentation last week how far it will go to cover up what's going on there. It was a show. What a confession. What a cover-up. The cover-up always gets you. I have an update here from a family member from January 2nd. It's a family member from one of the J-sixers, and it reads, Kyle filing was able to call. He was in solitary confinement. He lost some privileges and his email. He also had a release date extended to June 19th, 2027. Prison is a horrible place, and misery loves company there. His name was drawn out of a hat and was told he had to fight, or his consequences would be that he would be beaten up or stabbed. This is the politics that go on in prisons. Some people don't make it out. People there who have long prison sentences don't have anything to lose and love the power they hold, as that is the only control they have in their lives. I worry every day about him. He's a very strong-minded man, and this will not break him. We are hoping to make the ten-and-a-half-hour trip next weekend to visit him. I have not seen him for almost two years and just want to be able to hug him. I pray that we get approved to visit. I'm not a very good speaker, but at least I have a voice. If these inmates speak up, they have their privileges taken away. If they speak up, they can't see or talk to their families. If they speak up, they get beaten and thrown into solitary confinement. Don't forget about these inmates. Don't get fooled by the presentations from those who want to show their control. Do something to help. You may say, what can I do? I am only one person. Seven people, seven billion people on this earth. If everybody did something, our world would be such a better place. As I said before, we, the people, are their voice now. We will not bend. We will not break. We will not give in. We will not give up. We, the Northern Neck Patriots, are the only hope for better treatment. We want the truth. We want to help. We need your help. We are the Northern Neck Patriots. We are not going away. We are getting stronger, and we have only just begun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next person to speak is Merrill Malley.
I'm a former physician, so you can tell my writing's not very good. It's Mark Malley, and I live at 1530 Monday Point Road in Calio. Actually, my wife and I have lived there for about a year and a half. And I'm just, this, I have a relatively simple problem, I think. We installed a solar field in, right next to our house, and it's a 25-kilowatt system, but I'd like to upgrade it to about 36 kilowatts. Actually, last year, I used 40 and a half, so I'm not even to the point where I would use all the energy anyway. As I read, and there's actually multiple, there was some question about, is it legal to have greater than 25? And there are several in the state already in residential homes. And typically, what happens is you split, like I have two inverters, so half the power would only, would be allowed to go back to the grid. The other half would only be used by me. So it wouldn't be like too much for, I think the way the law is written, as I look at it, there's the 20, it's under net metering, it's 25 kilowatts. And so that's how you kind of get beyond that, is to say, well, you know, we can use more, but Dominion doesn't want to see more than 25, so that's how we would do it. So anyway, I ask you to consider my petition. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next person to speak is Tom Jeffries.
Hello, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Tom Jeffries, Money Point Road. I'm here to talk about the Northern Neck Regional Jail as well. There's a local paper of some folks that were just extradited from Maryland on charges of murder in the Northern Neck, and they're in the Northern Neck Regional Jail. That's the purpose of having a regional jail. But there are also people in the Northern Neck Regional Jail for the January 6 events that have charges not much more than trespassing and remaining in a place that they were not supposed to. They've been there for over two years. So I just wanted to read you a little bit about a letter from one of the gentlemen that wrote out of his time and experience in this local jail of ours. He basically just starts out that he was randomly moved out of his pod. He'd been in about five months, never given a reason, randomly moved again. He was beginning to feel like he was being messed with by the jail, and he came to find out that that was the case. In the new pod, he was searched in the middle of the night, interrupting his sleep. He was stripped naked and searched in his cell, then moved again. So the searches continued for seven days in a row, 10 times. After the 10th time, they found a razor blade, which caused him to be thrown into the hole, which is obviously a punishment pod. And then after that, he was brought out and put into another area where he was left alone for four days, no shower, no anything. And got put back into another pod, which was a punishment pod with other folks. He was one of the only two white people in the cell. After a few days, the other individual was beaten so badly that blood was coming out of the back of his head, and he thought the individual was killed. He was not killed, but he was taken out of there. And the rest of the folks in that pod told him, you better watch out, because we're looking after you, and we know that you're one of these J-sixers. So it got so bad that at some point, he had to request to be moved out of that area because he feared for his life. This was all about the same time that there was a rumor going around of another incident in the jail. It's called the Tucker Carlson Incident, where folks wanted to fight over the use of the television and what they were going to watch on TV. There was a fight that ensued. One of the gentlemen got sliced across the nose, and that's made national news. And there are a lot of things in this jail that are making national news. I bring it to your attention because it's not just a local matter. It's starting to spiral, and it's starting to go to people outside of the Northern Neck. So just to wrap up, this gentleman, basically, when he got into a new pod finally with familiar faces, he immediately felt some comfort and thanked God over and over. A lot of these people are former military, they're veterans, they're law enforcement, they're God-fearing people, they're good people, again, trespassing versus what some of these other folks that are in there were, are murderers and rapists and so on. So I ask that you all please keep an eye on what's going on in this jail. Every county has three representatives on that board, the jail board. Every county is responsible for what happens within that jail. So I implore you to try to really read up on, understand what's going on there. An excellent location for doing that is the Northern Neck Sentinel. New addition just came out today. It's packed full of information. I ask you to please make yourselves aware of it, and thank you for anything you can do.
Thank you, sir. All right, I don't have anyone else sign up on the sheet, but would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak tonight here? All right, would anybody in the virtual world like to speak? Mr. Morgan, do you have anybody? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak? Got Benny Allen? All right, would anybody in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Nothing. Okay. All right, since no one wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now we will start with our public hearings. Our first one on the agenda tonight is requested by Man Properties, and Mr. Morrison, unless you take over on that.
We have a request by Man of Properties LLC owner and Kyle Yatman applicant for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a boathouse larger than the allowed 700 square feet. The property is shown as Tax Back Parcel 8A-1-1, and is located at 1474 Lodge Road.
All right, we have anybody here tonight representing this application? Yes, sir. Come on up, please. Come on up, Mr. Yatman.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight?
All right, good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Kyle Yatman, owner of the property at Subject Property, and we're slightly over the 700-square-foot requirement. Reason for that is it's a 26-and-a-half-foot boat with about a three-foot swim platform on the back, so roughly about 30-foot, which is what would be encompassed in the overhang for the boathouse. And respectfully ask that we can go slightly above the limit there.
Okay. All right, any board members have any questions? Questions for Mr. Yatman for open public hearing? All right, Mr. Yatman, we're going to open the public hearing. If they have anything else, we'll let you know here soon. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this. I have no one signed up to speak, but would anyone like to speak? Anyone like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Is that no one? All right. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board. What's the opinion of the board?
Trying to get to the conditions, to see what they were, suggested conditions.
Mr. Morriston, would you read the conditions?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions have approved, or that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, and the boathouse shall be constructed as shown on the joint permit application.
I moved it, we approve it.
Second. All right, I got a motion to second. All right, do I have any, any other comment?
The boathouses all around it and across the creek from it.
Yeah, they are.
At Marina, so you can't say it's not.
Not a whole lot of.
Not aberration, to put it my way.
Yep. All right. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Yatman, your application has been approved, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ain't going to be in my speed.
All right, our next item on the agenda is the application by Randy Colson, and Mr. Morriston, I'll let you take care of that one.
We have a request by Randy Colson and Jaclyn Conselman owners to allow multi-dwelling unit consisting of three one-bedroom apartments on property zone R1 residential. The property is shown as tax part parcel 38B-1-118V, and is located at 181 Main Street in Reedville.
All right, anybody here representing this application tonight?
Hi, board, I'm Randy Colson, reside at 184 Cockles Creek View Drive, Reedville. My wife Jackie. You all, I believe, have the plot.
Yes.
Passed out. Based on Mr. Morriston's recommendation, there was a minor change on the setback of the building, we moved it to comply from the centerline of the street. I met with him today. I also have pictures, if anybody's interested to see. Hold that there. The familiarizations, they're labeled on both sides. You know, there's nine units there presently. Mature adults, it's quite a demand for housing. We have a waiting list, the all single-bedroom apartments, all of them except one are only occupied by one person. One unit, there's a, there's a couple. We have 24 parking spaces there, 16 in the front of the building, and eight in the back. I think we only utilize about nine spaces at the most, some of the resident, two of them, I believe, don't have cars.
Obviously.
There's never a proper parking. The front of the building, the blacktop is going to be taken up and redone because it's graded improperly. And it's also paved out to the sidewalk, which serves no purpose, so we're going to be eliminating about 10-foot of blacktop from the sidewalk toward the parking and replacing it with topsoil and grass, trying to then have all, all that blacktop. You know, from, from Main Street, you won't even see this building, because the right side will line up with the existing building. The, from the rear, there's a row of trees, which won't be changed at all, as the, as the pictures show, pretty much hides the rear of the building. Each apartment will have its own private entrance, as does the other units that I have. Just see if I covered everything. Yeah, just, in, in the rear, we have eight parking spaces available, we only use six of them. In the front, we have 16 available, and we only use five of them. Pretty much more than half of the parking lot in front is unused. In fact, it's so underutilized that we allowed the library to park their bookmobile in the front portion for better visibility to the street, because those spots are never used. Anybody have any question?
Any board members have any questions?
No, Mr. Yatman.
No questions at this time. All right, we'll, we'll open the public hearing here in just a second. All right, we're going to open the public hearing on this. I have one person to speak tonight, and that's Vincent Haney.
Good evening, gentlemen, Vincent Haney, Reedville, Virginia. The Colsons are doing a wonderful job with this property, they keep it well. Have a couple issues with the adding more units there. Currently, the eight parking places he's saying that are theirs on the back, they actually have to come across the museum property that's Festival Hall. If you look at the property line, it goes right straight through where he's parking, so that, we need to clear up needed access to that for them to be able to add more parking, or more burden for parking back there. So we'll have 11 units, so you'll need 22 parking places, is that correct?
Is that correct?
No, you've got nine, so twelve, you need 24 parking places there.
Yes, sir.
So we'll need to have that clarified. How do we define mature? Is there any regulation within the county for mature housing? I know there's a need, well aware of that.
Yes.
So just need to know how that's defined within the county ordinances, and how they will regulate it. Sewer connections, how do they work? Is there one sewer connection for that property? Or are these new individual units going to each have their own sewer connection? Questions we'd like clarified. You've clarified the setback, so that's great. Another issue the museum has is their trash from this apartment ends up in their dumpster, so that needs to be taken care of. Are they going to supply trash pickup for these units? Or will that be something that the museum's going to keep having a problem with? So there are the issues I have with it. Like to see those clarified. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haney.
Can we address the board?
Yes, sir.
As, as far as the getting into the eight spaces in the back, I believe that easement in, already exists. I looked through my papers from closing, I didn't see it. But if everybody looks at the site plan, they'll see that in the front of the building, the Fisherman's Museum uses my paved driveway as the exit from the building, for the Fisherman's Museum as well. So I would imagine that easements exist for both of them, and if in fact they don't, this would certainly be the time to correct it, and as a condition of approval, that would be no problem. I do have a total of 24 parking spaces. I didn't know that this was the place to bring up the sewer line, but if we're talking about it, there's an existing six-inch sewer that serves the existing nine units, and a new six-inch main would come in behind for the three, and then it would branch off to each individual unit with a four-inch. Did I cover everything, or is there something else, Vincent? Oh, garbage. To the best of my knowledge, all my residents take care of their own garbage, with the exception of one who doesn't drive, and she, she pays a man to come right to the front porch and pick it up on Thursday and bring it to recycle. The garbage is overflowing back there, but like I said, to the best of my knowledge, it's not from my tenants. It hasn't been picked up in a month and a half, the dumpster. Many times the birds get into it and spread it around, and my tenants have mentioned that, you know, they picked it up and put it back in there again. You know, any new tenant is made aware that they're responsible for garbage removal, and that that dumpster is the property of the Fisherman's Museum. You know, if there's any evidence other than that, I'd like to know about it, but to the best of my knowledge, none of my tenants are using it. Board have any other questions?
Assuming you could not get an easement straight with Reedville Association, could you come off of Reed Avenue? You've got a garage and the well, you can't go between.
Yeah.
Could you remove the garage as an access point?
No, I, I couldn't remove the garage, because inside that is five well-trawl tanks, okay? That, that's the purpose, that garage isn't just a storage.
Pompous. All right. You, you don't have a whole lot of land between your proposed building and the well.
Yeah, there, there'd be no problem with the easement, it's been that way forever. And, and like I said, if you look at the property line here, this whole, I believe, 30-foot-wide, you know, entrance to the Fisherman's, to Festival Hall, this is all my property here.
Your property goes?
If you look, can I approach?
Yeah, but I'm looking at your property on my map right here.
Yeah.
And what Vincent, Mr. Haney's talking about is to get across that gravel to your proposed, that, you might have to be crossing their property.
Oh, I am.
But do you, that's where you, you've got, if you don't have an easement there, you can't get there.
That's correct. Well, yes and no, because right here is, is also a driveway access here. But if you came in this way, I would obviously lose at least one parking space.
Well, how you, how would you come in on your property, like where space number eight is, and swing around and get one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Oh, you would, you would have to drive onto this.
But assuming you can't, how you going to get there? Just because it's been done in the past doesn't mean it's there.
Okay, but what I'm saying to you is, this whole road here, that goes in front of the Fish, the Festival Hall, this is all mine.
All right, then you're going to ride down beside the building?
No, 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 that's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if an easement doesn't exist for this, then I would imagine it doesn't exist for this.
I don't know what exists.
Yeah, so we'll basically trade off. They need this, I need this.
I, that's, that's an issue that's not in our.
Yeah.
You need, you need to have the parking spots, that's all I can tell you.
Well, in all honesty, if I had none of this, I, I really don't need it, because I have all this, this is never used here.
How, how many total apartments would you have?
We have 16 in the front here.
No, how many apartments do you have here?
I have nine.
And you, you're talking eight back here?
No, 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 three.
Three?
Nine and three. A, a total of 12.
All right. How many parking spots they need, assuming for 12 units?
Two for each unit.
So that's 24 parking spots, so you've got to have 24 spots.
So, so we do have that.
As drawn, and that's assuming you have.
So that's.
A right-of-way access.
If, if you concede to make that a condition, that I, I get that easement, then I'm sure there's no problem with it.
I know, I've dealt, my father was a surveyor, I know about dealing with land uses, so until I see.
That's why I'm saying the board would be, you know, covered, because it would be contingent. If I can't get the easement and give a copy to the board, then the approval is null.
No further questions?
Does anybody else have?
So you're saying that now, sir, you're saying all your tenants have contracted with organizations to move the trash, right? Except one.
No, no, I'm saying they, they take their garbage to the recycle center, because the tenants drive. I have one tenant that does not drive.
Okay.
Okay, so she pays a man to come every Thursday.
So everyone else has carried the trash to the, the dumpster? Well.
The, the problem with the dumpster, like Vincent mentioned, is unauthorized people stocking the apartment. My tenants have told me they see cars pulling there and get rid of the garbage. To the best of my knowledge, like I said, none of my tenants put their garbage in the dumpster. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, not at this time, sir. All right, I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet? Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right, how about, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? All right. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board.
Mr. Chairman, how may we grant this request with the suggested conditions?
Mr. Morriston, would you read the conditions, please?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions have approved, or that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies. All lighting shall be non-reflective and directed downward, and an easement shall be provided to the Building and Zoning Office for access to the eight rear parking spots to be utilized for this multi-unit dwelling.
All right, I got a motion to have second. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I have a motion second. Is there any other discussion?
My discussion is on the condition three. I mean, an easement shall be provided to the Board of Zoning Office. Is, should it be some documentation that an easement exists across the Reedville, the Fisherman's Museum to get there? I mean, to me, it's a wording issue. Any suggestions, Mr. Gregory, on how? I think what, what is your intention, Mr. Morriston, so Mr. Gregory can help figure it out?
My intent certainly is that if an easement does not exist, then one is prepared now across the other property to access these eight parking spaces.
You could require the applicant to show, or to provide, that he has the access or an easement, access easement to the property. Want to keep it simple.
Right, be simple, because right now this almost implies it's granting to the county
I could, I could talk with Mr. Morriston about it, and Terry will even come up with something, but.
Mr. Chairman, obviously, we got a motion on the table.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor right now. Any other comment while we're waiting?
Well, I want to get this one resolved right now, to the extent we can.
Yes.
Because if we don't get it resolved in a year, then we've got to come back again.
Wait a few more minutes?
I don't have a problem waiting.
All right, we'll wait.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't, I don't know if this is much, thanks. I don't know if this is much improved from what Mr. Marston came up with, but I might suggest that applicant shall provide proof of a properly recorded access easement across adjacent property granting access to the subject property.
I move that we, I make an amendment to Mr. Jett's motion to incorporate what Mr. Gregory said.
All right, you must get, all right. All right, then. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Coles, your motion passes, sir.
Thank you for your consideration and your time.
All right, thank you.
Still got to get...
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
You're welcome.
All right, our next item, let's see, is a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance on solar facilities. And Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, sir. A revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance, section 148-155, solar energy facilities, to prohibit solar energy facilities in R1 residential general and R2 residential waterfront zone properties. Require a solar siting agreement, an environmental impact statement, a landscape agreement and surety, reduce the time for revision of the decommissioning plan from every five years to every two years, and increase the time to actually decommission a plan from, from six to twelve months. The Planning Commission recommended that the board consider keeping the revision of the decommissioning plan to five years as they feel revising every two years is burdensome.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. All right, does the board have any comments on this before we open the public hearing? All right, no comments. We'll open the public hearing now. I have one person on the sign-up sheet, and that's Jacob Caricello.
I'm sorry, it's Italian, it's a carousel.
Caricelli, okay. I couldn't quite make it one letter.
Yeah, I was just having a...
I just want to make sure. Caricelli, okay.
Well, good evening, members of the board. My name is Jacob Caricella, and I'm with a nonprofit organization called Energy Right. Some of you may remember my colleague Blake Cox. He's become a familiar face in the county the last several months. And just as a reminder, Energy Right is here to educate and encourage energy developed the right way at the local level, and with an emphasis on property rights and conservative ideals, including an all of the above energy strategy. We want to ensure there's a common sense voice at the local level when energy discussions take place. On behalf of Energy Right, thank you for your diligent work on solar ordinance so landowners may continue to bring forward solar projects for your consideration. Your solar ordinance incorporates strong design standards, setbacks and buffers, and decommissioning rules, all hallmarks of good policy. My main comment here tonight is regarding the restrictions of solar in R1 and R2 waterfront. I can understand generally not wanting solar in residential areas, but putting a restriction into ordinance language, completely banning solar in R1 and R2 waterfront, could hinder the ability of you all, the board, to pass a really good project in the future. The board has also shown the ability to deny a project that is zoned in R2 residential, so why consider an extra burden in your ability to pass a project that may be the perfect fit to the county but has one small parcel zoned, R1 or R2 waterfront? Furthermore, passing the zoning restriction would be damaging the property rights. What if a project fits really well in the county, neighbors are not opposed, and it respects the beauty of Northumberland, but one small parcel involved in the project does not fit the new zoning code? It could be dead before you could all consider the benefits and the revenue incentives for the county. Striking this language will allow the board to judge projects based on their merits, just as other developmental proposals, and allow you the flexibility to pass more unreasonable projects. It is my understanding that some residents have concerns about the visibility of panels. Requiring reasonable setbacks and buffers with native vegetation will make good projects quiet neighbors and nearly invisible. We also encourage landowners and developers to establish relationships with adjacent property owners early on in the project development to answer their questions and ensure their concerns are taken into consideration. We would urge you to move forward and the consideration and approval of solar developments in Northumberland so projects may be considered and the benefits of American-made energy can be fully unleashed in the county. Energy Right is happy to be a resource in any way, so thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. All right, I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, but would anyone else like to speak tonight? Come on up, Miss Tany.
Thank you. I think putting these restrictions are denying landowners of their rights. And I think you're gonna box the county in on something that doesn't need to be. And I think it's narrow-minded and selfish, and you're not looking down the road at the next generation. Because, you know, solar's here regardless of what you do, because the sun's gonna come up, you can't stop that. So solar's here forever. So instead of blocking, we need to figure out how we can move forward and take advantage of this, create a safer environment, generate more energy and revenue for the county. You just approved a gas station with solar chargers in it, but you're limiting the ability of people in the county to produce solar to supply electric cars. They're here to stay. So as Northumberland County can continue to do, we can continue to be at the back of the train, we can get left out, we don't have any vision and forward-thinking and just block these things. But it's not really about any of you all on this board. It's about the next generation, clean air, clean energy, and what are they gonna do to make a living in Northumberland County? So I would not like to see you all block, put those restrictions on landowners.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, I live in Heasville, and I just have a question.
Ma'am, what was your name again?
Robin Chiro, sorry. S.C.H.I.R.O. My question is, I'm an engineer, and so that, I'm typically gonna ask this question, why is an environmental impact statement instead of an environmental assessment? Why do you go right to an environmental impact statement? Why not look at an environmental assessment first? You may not need an environmental impact statement. I guess, there are apples and oranges as far as one's the predecessor of the other, and why would you go right to an environmental impact statement? Why not an environmental assessment first and see if you even need an environmental impact statement? It's very costly for people to actually perform an environmental impact statement. An environmental assessment may be the only thing that's needed. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, do we have anybody in the virtual world tonight would like to speak on this solar suffill, solar ordinance? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? All right, since no one else wants to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board. What's the pleasure of board, or what's the board's comments?
I'd like to review this somewhat. I'd like to see it postponed until next month. I have another group that I would like to, I would actually would like for the board to meet with them, and that's the Energy Rights Group that Jacob works with.
I don't agree with him at all. I would vote against him. I think we need more education.
That's, that's what I, that's what I'm proposing. I'd like to meet with that group and see where we go from there. I don't mind solar, I'm all for it, just want it done right. I want to make sure whatever we do, we do right. You know, it is here, it is here.
It's here, and we're not gonna stop. I'm not gonna try to stop, no. I agree with you.
But, you know, I think we need, we talked, Mr. Barry Hill from the state, I think we got another resource that could give us some more information. And I think before we pass this, I think we need to take advantage of that resource and meet with them. And, you know, if the whole board wishes to, that's fine. If not everybody wishes to do so, that's, that's fine. But I'd like to have an opportunity to meet with them. I'd like to set up a time during the week and we can meet here or in another county office building, but I'd like to have an opportunity to meet with them.
All right. Any other comments?
The, even if we pass what is proposed, it's still a conditional use permit. Is that correct? We can propose conditions over and above this, correct? And as I see this, it's prohibiting solar in only two zones, R1 and R2. All the other zones, it's still as allowed by conditional use. I mean, R3 is just a big beach, fleeting beach, things like that, it's not gonna happen. But it is theoretically gonna happen there because it's a conditional use. Conservation, and there's conservation. The problem is, a zone is a nice word, but you can have something that's agricultural zoned that is prime waterfront, too. Our zoning is not exactly, it was the way it was back in 1974, that does not match current usage or thinking. And to do that would take a whole remapping, rezoning, that's another ballgame I never would want to think about. So, I don't have any problem with continuing it to get more information, and if anybody can come up with a way to protect this county down the road, I'm all for it. Because I don't want my daughter and my grandchild, maybe more, paying for a decommissioning. That's what I cannot guarantee right now. I don't like passing the button.
All right, so you want to, you're asking to carry it over, or you're asking to send it back to the Planning Commission?
We, we can get more information.
Or get more information, or what?
Get more information, then we may send it back to them. But, no, with Mr. Brand, the more people tell us stuff, I learn something every time I hear something, like Mr. Barry Hill. He taught us a lot, too.
Yeah, we did learn a lot. All right, Mr. Jett, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Long, you don't have any more comments?
No, I, I agree we need to carry it over and get more information, but I'm not gonna vote against prohibiting solar anywhere in the county.
Yeah. All right, so do I have a motion to carry it over?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, how long do we want to carry it over? Next month?
Yeah, next month.
Or carry it over to another meeting date?
As possibly with what Mr. Brand suggested, or next month, I don't care.
Yeah, any, any one we know that can help us out as far as...
All right, if we, if we bring another group in, we need to listen to them, and, all right, any, are you gonna move carry it on over?
Generally.
General.
Lack of a better word to do it.
All right, that's generally. All right, any other discussion?
I guess here is what discussion, what is it gonna change? Carrying it over a month, or two months, or six months? Yeah, not sending it back to the Planning Commission, nothing is gonna change.
Only thing I can say is we just get more information. I'm not gonna say it's gonna change the ordinance, it's just information for us.
Well, Mr. Gregory, if, if we as the board supervisors wanted to change things, quote-unquote, more restrictive, we would have to re-advertise, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
As long as we either adopt as-is or make it, quote-unquote, less restrictive, there's no re-advertising required.
That's correct.
Okay. So if it didn't have to be a wholesale, assuming, we know the English, what that means in the English language, if there was gonna be relatively minor changes or limited, the board proposed that new public hearing without having to go back. But if we wanted a wholesale, then the Planning Commission. I'm not, I don't know which way, if anything, is gonna happen.
Yeah, I just don't know what y'all are looking for. I don't think y'all do. Been going on for about twelve months now, man come for us with six times change and did everything we asked him to do, and it still wasn't enough. That's, I mean, I just wonder what part of the law is gonna settle. I don't have any power to put it all, but I mean, I don't know what to expect. I don't think the people do.
All right, we got a motion on the floor now. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right, we will carry it over. I have no more public hearings on the list tonight. We don't have anything else. We do have a meeting on the 22nd, so we do need a motion to carry over.
Mr. Tadlock, you forgot to, we didn't talk about possibly meeting with the auditor.
Yes, that's right, Tom.
Do you want to do it before the 22nd or that March meeting? What do you suggest?
I wasn't sure what the board's schedule looked like, or what you would like to do on that. We can try to schedule that, I think 20, the 21st was the earliest that we could do that.
I personally don't have a cloud to go to the 9th of March, because that would be a, quote-unquote, relatively short meeting, unless you even think of a lot of things to be added between now and then.
Ninth of March, March.
But Paul Lee's presentation would take...
Ninth of March is our regular board meeting.
Yeah, that's our regular board meeting.
Right.
Paul Lee would not be able to make it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
But as long as the board understands that it would not be him presenting it, but that's fine if you all wish to just do it on the 9th.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I say ninth.
Ninth, right.
All right. All right, so we'll do that on the 9th. All we now need, and Mr. Tadlock, you have anything else?
I do not, no, sir.
All right, one other thing. Mr. Tadlock, are you encouraging the organization to get the information on their budget in?
We had a January, end of January due date for the budget, so we're beginning to compile that information.
All right, that's all I have. Okay. All right, I need a motion to carry over to the 22nd.
At what time, Mr. Tadlock, is it meeting?
I think that was at 5:30, was it?
5:30.
I move that we continue to President Washington's birthday at 5:30.
All right.
George, that is.
George Washington.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for coming tonight. Our next board meeting will be on February the 22nd. It'll be a joint meeting with the school board.